I call this meeting to order. Welcome to the Wallingford Board of Education meeting for Monday, January 27th, 2020. And please stand as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. LaBelle, may we please have a roll call?
Mrs. Allison?
Here.
Mrs. Costelli?
Here.
Mrs. Corso?
Here.
Ms. Levek?
Here.
Mrs. Purcell?
Here.
Mrs. Roggio?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Mr. Roth?
Here.
Mr. Votto?
Mr. Votto is ill this evening, so...
Eight members present and vote.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is Student Board Representatives from Lyman Hall. Leah Shafi.
Hi, guys. How are you this evening?
Very well, thank you.
How was everyone's winter break? Good?
Good.
So there's a lot going on at Lyman Hall within this month and the upcoming month. Lyman Hall students recently finished up midterm exams and the second semester began today. Student Council will be holding its second blood drive of the year on Friday, January 31st. The Drama Club will be performing their show But Why Bump Off Barnaby next week, Friday 6th and 7th, with two 7:00 p.m. showings. And auditions and rehearsals for Lyman Hall's spring production of Chicago begin this week. Course selection for underclassmen will begin in the upcoming month, and counselors will be going into classes to present about the program of studies. The annual Credit for Life program will be held for sophomores at the Rec Center on February 25th. An eighth-grade parent night and workshop will be held for middle school parents on February 10th to help with the high school transition. And there was a scholarship workshop for students held on Thursday, January 9th. The Lyman Hall Boys and Girls Basketball Teams competed in the annual doubleheader against Sheen this past Friday, January 24th. And the girls held their annual Pink Night that evening, honoring those struggling with breast cancer. The Lyman Hall Boys Hockey Team won their fourth straight game this past Saturday, improving their record to 5-4-1. The cheerleading team attended a competition at Quinnipiac University on January 25th. And the athletic department wants to extend a huge congratulations to the track and field athletes who qualified for states. There was a Unified Sports Game held between the basketball doubleheader on January 24th. The Unified Sports Team will be participating in a Polar Plunge on February 29th. From Ag Science, Ms. Mapas' Plant Science Program coordinated with the Best Buddies Chapter at our school for a wreath-making event before winter break. 142 applications for admissions were received, and 90 freshmen will be admitted for Fall 2020. Ag Ed Acceptance Night will be held on February 11th. And the Ag program looks forward to celebrating National FFA Week during the school days after President's Day. Thank you.
Thank you very much for a very informative report.
Of course, as always.
From Mark T. Sheen, Marissa Galicia.
How are you?
I'm very well, thank you. How about you?
Good. Okay, so, good evening. This past month has been very busy at Sheen. On January 8th, the Esports Team held tryouts for Overwatch Rocket League. On January 12th, Sheen's Gov. and Politics class got to work with the Wallingford Police Department and their canines. On January 15th, the counselors held a workshop for seniors looking for scholarships. On January 19th, the MTS Ski Club took a trip to Mount Snow. From January 20th to the 24th, Sheen students took their midterm exams. Looking ahead, on January 28th, the National Honor Society Leadership Committee will hold SAT tutoring and will hold it every single Tuesday. On February 6th, the seniors will have their cap and gown fitting. On February 25th, sophomores will be participating in Credit for Life field trip, where they will have the opportunity to learn about saving a budget of their money. In Sheen Athletics, the girls' basketball team currently has a record of 10 wins and three losses, and their next game is tomorrow against Mercy. The girls' indoor track team has had many athletes qualify for the state tournament. This past weekend, the girls' indoor track team won the HK Invitational with many highlights as a team. Olivia Dubuck has broken two school records this season in the 600 and the 300, and A-Rae Winters also broke a school record in the 200. The boys' indoor track team has also been competing well. They finished in the middle of the pack during the SEC Coaches Invitational. Raleigh Bajamber has also broken a school record in the Open 200. The boys' basketball team currently has nine wins and two losses and has qualified for postseason play. On Lyman Hall, on Friday, they beat Lyman Hall with a score of 60 to 40. The cheerleading team has been working extremely hard in preparation for their first competition on Saturday, February 1st. The boys' swim and dive team has also had a successful season so far. They had their first victory over a university classical magnet co-op. The boys' hockey team currently has eight wins and one loss and one tie. Right now, they're ranked first in Division III. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Another informative report. The next item on the agenda is Presentations and Awards. And the first item on that agenda is presentation by the Lyman Hall Chapter of the National FFA Organization. We'd like to invite them to the stage.
Good evening. My name is Casey Dalzen. I am the Head FFA Advisor for the Lyman Hall Chapter here in Wallingford. Our leadership organization, and specifically our leadership team here, would like to share with you an update of both of the opportunities that some of our students have had the opportunity to take part in this year. And so, they're going to be going through two of the circles. For those of you who don't know, our program is a three-circle program. We do classroom and lab experiences. And so, for anybody who follows our Instagram account, you see what we do on a daily basis with a lot of the different activities throughout all of our pathways. But that kind of gets the glossy finish. We don't really get a chance to broadcast or advertise all the other amazing opportunities they have through their supervised agricultural activities, their projects that the kids do outside of class, and also the leadership opportunity. And those are our three circles: classroom, SAE, and FFA. And so, we'd like to kind of update the board. And one, thank you for your support over the years, not just the past year in 2019, also the administration at Lyman Hall and Central Office as well. The kids really felt motivated and passionate and wanted to come and speak with you and kind of update you just on last year. So there's a couple of different things we're going to discuss. But again, they wanted to focus on these different opportunities that you guys don't always get to hear about. And so, without further ado, I'd like to introduce the team. We'll start with...
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Joanna Turner, and I'm the Lyman Hall FFA Chapter President. I study equine science and reside in the town of Meriden.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name's Cassie Popper. I currently study veterinary science at Lyman Hall, and I am the Vice President of our chapter, and I'm from right here in Wallingford.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Autumn Murray. I'm studying wildlife biology. I'm the Lyman Hall FFA Secretary, and I'm from Wallingford.
Hello, everyone. My name is Rory Penton. I'm the Lyman Hall Chapter Sentinel. I study food science, and I am also from Wallingford.
Hi, everyone. I'm Anna Candelli. I'm from Wallingford, Connecticut. And I am currently studying wildlife bio.
So I just wanted to do a little intro for you guys. As a senior, the agricultural science program has meant a lot to me with the opportunities I've had available. I've been able to attend chapter, state, and national leadership conferences, as well as compete in career development events. These career development events have helped me enhance my knowledge, helped me enhance my knowledge beyond what's offered in class and lab work, which is already quite a lot. These opportunities have helped me determine my career goals of equine business management and agricultural education. Lots of our members feel the same way. Whether or not they are pursuing an ag-based career, tonight, we would like to thank you for your continued support. By starting... We would like to thank you for your continued support by starting off with some of the trips students have been able to attend. I'd like to invite Autumn to talk about these trip opportunities.
So, starting off with the trips, 2019 was an amazing year for different types of trips that we were able to take. In 2019, we were given many very unique opportunities that many other schools are not able to have, and we are very grateful for that. So, some local trips that we were able to take were going to the Norwalk Aquarium, Deerfield Farm, Creamery Brook Bison Farm, Cops Island Oyster Farm, and Hillendale Egg Farm. Along with this, we were able to take our very own kayaks and canoes out onto the Connecticut River and the Mattabasset River. And we were able to take some students out for hikes at DeFritah Park and Steeple Rock Preserve. Along with this, we had a couple other bigger trips, which include some of the vet science and animal students were invited to the Plum Island, which is an animal disease research center in New York. While there, they were able to tour different parts of the island, meet with staff members, and learn more about the facility itself. Along with this, we had a few Big E trips. One of them were students were able to travel to the Big E to observe the American Kennel Club and the Troy's Kennel Club dog shows. Students observed different types of breed of dogs, dogs being prepared and groomed, along with speaking to different trainers and groomers that were there, along with being able to learn about the dog show industry itself. The other trip was the Equine Affair Trip. Senior students were able to take part of the Equine Affair Trip in Massachusetts. Students were able to go to symposiums, tour barns full of different types of horse breeds, along with being able to learn about equine health and wellness. And we have a couple of other bigger trips that we had this year, including Nationals, which we'll talk about a little bit later on, and being able to go to Montana to visit Yellowstone. I was very lucky, and I was able to go on this trip. And Yellowstone was just amazing. Being able to go was an ecological eye-opening experience. We were able to see different plants and animals and their natural habitat. So, we were able to see bison in the mountains and magpies, which is a type of bird that we don't have in Connecticut in the fields in Montana. Being able to compare the Northeast and the Northwest was a really fascinating hands-on learning experience, and I enjoyed it so, so much. Along with this, we were able to meet some of the professionals in the field itself. So, we were able to ask them questions about their daily life and get a hands-on experience about what their job really entails. And coming up in the next couple of years, we have some really, really big trips that the students are so excited about. Next year, in April, we're going to Iceland. And in 2021, we're going to Belize. And we are all so excited, and we are all so grateful for your support. Without it, we wouldn't be able to go on these trips. And next, I would like to invite Rory to talk about some of our CDE opportunities.
So, CDEs stands for Career Development Events, which are basically competitions held between the different Ag schools within the state. Personally, I've competed four times in two different CDEs, including the Milk Quality CDE and the Food Science CDE. And I'm currently training for my third year in the Food Science CDE. Participating in these competitions have given me lots of experience in content-specific areas that I wouldn't necessarily have gotten just by participating in class itself. We also allow crossovers between the different programs within CDEs. For example, a student from aquaculture could participate in the Food Science CDE, so we could learn about the different pathways that are available. I would like to acknowledge a lot of the teams that placed within the top 10 in the state for our CDEs, as well as the names of some students who placed within the top 10 individually. Our Dairy Judging Team placed eighth in the state. Our Envirethon Team placed seventh. Our Vet Science Team placed sixth, with Courtney Profetto placing seventh individually. Our Aquaculture Team placed sixth, with Lily Tangredi placing fifth individually, and Drew Bernard placing third individually. Our Milk Quality Team placed fourth this year, with Maddie Jeremiah placing second individually. Our Environmental Science Team placed third in the state, with Michael Lowitt placing second individually. Our Food Science Team placed second in the state, with Krista Lessing placing second individually, and myself placing first individually in the state. I would now like to invite Joanna and Anna to talk about some leadership opportunities.
Hello again. I'd like to share with you the different leadership conferences that students are offered to attend. The Junior Leadership Conference is for freshmen and brand-new sophomores to the Ag program to learn different leadership skills. IMAGE is for sophomores, juniors, and seniors to learn more advanced leadership techniques. COLT, or Chapter Officer Leadership Training, is a conference held for those individuals, like us, who would like to serve as a chapter officer. Ag Day at the Capitol is held every year in March. Students go to represent the Lyman Hall FFA Chapter to advocate for agriculture in Connecticut by talking to state representatives. The National FFA Convention and Expo is held in Indianapolis, Indiana, every October. Students get to go and experience workshops, participate in community service activities, and compete in national competitions such as state booths. I will now introduce Anna to talk about her experience of competing in state booth at national convention.
I was given the opportunity to join my state booth team from Lyman Hall. State booth is a competition that showcases Connecticut's agriculture. So, for a state convention, we competed with three other schools and won first place. Our state booth had VR equipment and film and video shot with a 360 camera. We won first place for Connecticut, and we are representing Connecticut in the National FFA Conference. It was fun to represent Connecticut, also to showcase and explore career pathways and learn more about leadership. I would like to introduce Cassie to speak more about our community event.
Good afternoon, board members, once again. Tonight, I'm here to talk to you about community service and opportunities we've been allotted due to your continued support. Service is a very important part of our chapter here at Lyman Hall. Some students provide service to our town through their supervised agricultural experiences, while others utilize leadership as a tool for volunteering. Regardless of the mode, volunteerism and community are key characteristics of our members, and we offer many different opportunities for members to become involved. Your continued support throughout the years has helped us plan community service events for all different students and all different interests. Wildlife Biology students have the opportunity to partake in the No Child Left Inside Initiative, an event that promotes environmental education and provides solutions for environmental problems. Students can also partake in the Great Park Pursuit, a discovery-based experience in Connecticut's state parks and forests. Students in the Natural Resource Committee have the opportunity to volunteer at our apple picking for local food banks event. We use a process called gleaning, in which students collect leftover apples in previously harvested fields. Equine Science students can participate in our Horse Show, an event that was student-run and open to the public at Epic Farm in Middlefield, Connecticut. The Puppy Up Walk is an amazing event where students can volunteer and fight canine and human cancer through comparative oncology. Another event that may pique the interest of a small animal science student is our Animal Shelter Toy Creation Donation Drive, in which we braided old t-shirts and transformed them into toy ropes for dogs to play with. These donations then went to the Wallingford Animal Shelter. Our chapter also provides students interested in a future of teaching the chance to present animals from our Small Animal Lab to preschoolers at the YMCI. We also collaborate with additional clubs within Lyman Hall for events such as the Bold Food Drive. For this event, we work closely with the National Honor Society to collect cans and non-perishable food items for Master's Mana. Your support allows us to offer these opportunities to students and to help students volunteer to events that interest them. I personally love to participate in the Toy Creation Drive for the Wallingford Animal Shelter because I'm a huge advocate for adoption in shelters. It is also amazing to get to see the two organizations I actively lead collaborate for the Bold Food Drive each spring. All of the opportunities and events discussed today could have not happened without your support. I'd like to take one final opportunity to thank you from the entire Lyman Hall FFA Chapter for making our dreams and goals possible. As a token of our appreciation, our team wants to present you with the signed 2019 Chapter Yearbook. This yearbook is a compilation of our chapter's activities and allow you to see more of what your support enables. Thank you very much. Once again, thank you so much, and I hope you all have a fantastic night.
Thank you very much. What a wonderful presentation.
I'd just like to say just a quick word. I had the opportunity to see your event at the Big E, and it was second to none. Congratulations.
I'm going to share this with the other board members so they can take a look at this. The next item of business...
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
I just want to point out, I just love the FFA motto that's noted here. And I want to read it for everybody. It's very short. It just says, "Together we are, learning to do, doing to learn, earning to live, and living to serve." I think that's just so powerful. It means so much. That's a great motto.
And I would just like to say again, Mrs. Dalzen, thank you for bringing your students here. As we all know, Ms. Dalzen was honored earlier this year as our Teacher of the Year for Wallingford, but also a semifinalist at the state level. Again, a tribute to our staff, our students, and your families because we know FFA also requires a lot of parental opportunity to get you to different places, make sure that you're there on time. So, thank you so much to the families and their support. So, congratulations. Great presentation.
Are there any other board members that would like to remark? Thank you so much for that presentation. It was wonderful.
All right. Our next presentation, I'm going to ask Mr. Zaco to come join me, the Principal of Mark T. Sheen High School. We have a student who is with us this year from Ecuador. And there's somewhat of a unique story, so Mr. Zaco has a little bit of a background to read. And then, we're going to call her up to be recognized.
All right. So Francesca Pons is our foreign exchange student from Ecuador. And she came to us this past, right in the summertime, to introduce herself. And I must say, you would never think that she's an exchange student. And I say that in the most positive way. She just blends right in. She was friendly. She wasn't shy. She was outgoing, yet humble. And she just introduced herself and just became a part of Sheen High School immediately. There is a unique story with her host family, and we'll call them up in just a second. Teresa Ohala, who was a Sheen High School Special Education teacher for 17 years, is her host mother. And Teresa also hosted Francesca's mother 23 years ago. And maybe the goal is to host the next generation as well. But that's just a wonderful story of somebody from within the community and not only hosting somebody from Ecuador three years ago, but of course, then hosting, you know, keep passing that through and hosting our daughter as well. Francesca is very involved at Sheen High School. She was the manager for the girls' soccer team, and she also manages the boys' hockey team. And she's been recently accepted into a university in Quito, Ecuador, and she's going to study interior design and fashion. So, congratulations to you, and thank you for just being such a great student who has just blended right in, but more than just blended in. You've given back to our Sheen community. So, come on up.
I would just like to say that this was a long journey in a variety of ways, not just by miles traveled by airplane. But I do have to give a tremendous amount of credit to Ms. Ohala and her family for advocating on behalf of you to have you be able to come to us. It's not always easy to be able to get exchange students. There's a lot of political things you have to do, a lot of policies that have to be followed, and oftentimes, a lot of red tape that has to be cut. And we figured out a way to do that and successfully navigate those waters because it's not easy. So, again, thank you to the Ohallas for doing that. But we're so happy to have you here with us. This is just a little something you can take back for you, recognizing you being here. And we truly appreciate it and wish you the greatest success as you continue this year. Thank you. And if you could do me a favor? I know the board members, I don't know if you want to say anything? Oh, come on up, shake their hands, because they all want to make sure you do that.
All right. The next item on the agenda is a wonderful one as well. Recognition of the Mark T. Sheen High School Football Team 2019, CIAC Class S, Pro Football State Champions.
So, it's great to be able to recognize the team. Yesterday, there was a wonderful event sponsored by the Booster Club at AquaTurf that I had the pleasure of joining the team to experience. I won't say everything I said yesterday because this is actually being filmed. So, we'll just keep that to ourselves. Yesterday. So, with that said, though, before we call up the team, there are several honors that this team received that I think would go... We can't let go without being stated. So, first of all, Coach Farazi, just in case you didn't know, he was the Coach of the Year for Connecticut football, as well as Walter Camp Football Coach of the Year finalist. So, those are two incredible honors. And this is not the first time you were Coach of the Year, correct? Yes. Oh, on this level, but you had received other awards. But on this level, definitely. Terrence Bogan. Terrence, just stand. We're not going to ask you to sing. Yeah. Terrence was Walter Camp Football First Team Offense and Player of the Year finalist. All-State overall top 26 running back. Cosnow, SCC, rather, Tier Two Player of the Year. All-SSC Tier Two Offense. Record Journal All-Area Team. Game Time New Haven Register First Team All-State. Hartford Current All-State Team. So, congratulations, Terrence. Mr. Davis. Stand, please. All right. So, Walter Camp Football First Team Offense. All-State overall top 26 athlete. All-SSC, SCC, sorry, Tier Two Offense. Record Journal All-Area Team. Game Time New Haven Register First Team All-State. Hartford Current All-State Team. Jordan? And Jordan, Jordan was also MVP yesterday for the team. I'm surprised you didn't bring the trophy. Sorry. Sorry. Your table enjoyed that yesterday. Brandon McCarthy. He's sick? He wasn't sick yesterday. Just saying. No, just kidding. No, I'm sure something happened, but we wish you best, Brandon. But Brayden, excuse me. Brayden, we had Walter Camp Football Second Team Defense. All-State Class S Defensive Line. All-SCC Tier Two Defense. Record Journal All-Area Team. And Hartford Current All-Current Team. So, congratulations, Brayden. TJ, TJ DePasqua. All-SCC Tier Two Defense. Record Journal All-Area Team. And Hartford Current All-Current Honorable Mention. Congratulations. Mickey Demming. I love it. Mickey Mantle. I know the whole... Remember, that was like the first time I met you. We were going with your family, you and your brother, being named after baseball players from the Yankees, the best team, the one that doesn't cheat. Had to say that again. You know I'm not going to let that ever live down. So, Alex Cora, we are looking for an IT employee. We'd love to have you come join our staff. Sorry. I don't know. Forget it. I'll let it go. So, Mickey, All-SCC Tier Two Offense. Record Journal All-Area Team. And Hartford Current All-Current Honorable Mention. Congratulations. Kyle Simmons. Is Kyle here? All right. Guess not. Hartford Current All-Current Honorable Mention. Trey? Please stand. Trey Childers, who had, as was appropriately recognized, last, yesterday, was the Punt of the Year. That was incredible. That was a turning point. Hartford Current All-Current Honorable Mention. Congratulations. And last but not least, Kamla Chance. Hartford Current All-Current Honorable Mention. Congratulations. So, needless to say, this team has accomplished an incredible amount, not just winning a state championship, but having an incredible group of gentlemen who are equally as kind and nice as they are as strong athletes. nice as they are as strong athletes on the field. So, congratulations to all of you. At this time, what I'd like to do, and you need to listen, okay? Because this is going to, I know, yesterday, that wasn't always your strong suit. The thing is that tonight, what I'm going to do is you're going to come up, coach is going to say your name, Mr. Daley is going to give you a certificate. You're going to come up here, you're going to walk, and you're going to shake the hands of each of the board members, okay? And you're going to end up over here. We got that? So, name called, shake, 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 over there. All right? First one to mess it up, we are calling out totally, right, Jordan? All right. So, Coach Farazzi, Mr. Daley, Mr. Zaco. And I do have a list, actually.
Everyone got that? Shake, shake, shake. You got that?
Yes. I knew what was going on.
First off, well, thank you so much for that presentation. If you're looking for a chaperone to Iceland, hit me up. I'll definitely go. But thank you, thank you to, you know, the Board of Education and Central Office for, for recognizing us. As Dr. Menzo read, there are a ton of individual accomplishments that we've recognized over the last four months. You know, I felt like our season didn't end on December 14th. And, you know, another month and a half with lots of celebration, little banquets where we can honor individuals, and it was really terrific. Just speaking about on December 14th, I know a lot of people were there at, but it really had an old school, you know, old feel to it, between like the Letterman jackets that were 30 years old up in the bleachers, an entire section of pep band, two full sections of students. You know, we won the game. We, we get back to Wallingford, and the Wallingford Police Department gives us an escort through the center of town. It, it felt like, you know, it was something, you know, out of Hoosiers or out of Remember the Tyens. And it was just an example of, of how special the Wallingford community is, and we couldn't have accomplished this without the support of everybody. So, just thank you for tonight for giving us another opportunity to be recognized. And I'll turn it over at this point to the Coach of the Year, John Farazzi. Thank you, Chris. John Cotterswet.
You have a beautiful smile. Congratulations.
Ryan Crilly. Louis Cruz. Apollo Dubic. Ryan Gers. John Gogliatino. Billy Gorey. Nick Iannoni. Jamie Lavalley. Lucas Leon Barrero. Jaden Lody. Andrew Mansfield. Brayden McCarthy. Justin Moore. Nick Anito. Sebastian Pinos. Ryan Remillard. Russell Rutkowski. Ryan Shook. Kyle Simmons. Tom Straub. And Justin Zaniski. Again, we're, we're very humbled and honored to be here. We thank you so much for recognizing us, and we couldn't be here without the support of a great administration and a great set of parents, and for the ones that especially came to support us today, like they've done all season. And on behalf of our program, we'd like to, our captains would like to present to you a state championship plaque.
We thank the families, especially parents and friends and members of the Booster Club, who supported these superb athletes in their quest. The perseverance, teamwork, leadership, and sportsmanship displayed by this group of students was tremendous. We, of course, thank the coaches, athletic director, and administrators involved in guiding and encouraging these athletes to attain their goals. On behalf of the Board of Education, congratulations. I'm so proud of you.
Again, congratulations, guys.
Any other remarks? At this time, it's the question and answer period for the board. If you would like to vacate students, I'm sure you're anxious to get back to homework and things of that nature. So, this would be a natural time for you to do that, and we'll allow just a couple ...that exit. Are there any questions of the board from the public? Any questions of the board from the public? Seeing none, we'll move on to our next item. I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussion regarding the use during the 2019-2020 school year of a sick leave donation as requested by the WEA. So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Discussion on the motion? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to come out of executive session. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. We're out of executive session. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the consent agenda, items 7.1 through 7.33. I'll make a motion.
Second.
Discussion? No, there is none on a consent agenda? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We have not removed anything from the consent agenda, which brings us to item nine, correspondence, Mr. Ross.
We received a thank you note. Thank you for your expression of sympathy to the Board of Education members and Central Office staff, and Karen Havlick, and the loss of her mother.
Thank you.
We also have acknowledging a gift of valued at $600 from Toyota of Wallingford to Eversee Stevens School, which was a gift donations for families in need for the holiday. Thanks. We also received a gift donation from Gregory Naraja of a tenor saxophone, which is valued at $600, and we've accepted that with thanks. That goes to Sheehan High School. That's all that we have tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. We're on to committee reports, item 10. Mr. Vado will be our new ACES governing board representative, however, since he is not here, and since I will be the alternate, and I did attend this meeting, I'll give the report this evening. The ACES governing board met on January 9th, 2020. The minutes of the December 12th, 2019, meeting were approved. Under the executive director's report, Meg Birmingham from Nursing Services presented information to the governing board regarding the demographics of the students served by the nursing staff. Some of the students served by the nursing staff include 36 students with G or J feeding tubes, 104 students with life-threatening allergies, three students on ventilators, and 18 students with diabetes that require insulin and/or glucagon injections. She recounted some of the barriers to care that occur when students are nonverbal. There have been issues around attracting nurses to work at ACES due to the pay scale. The request was made for a one-time pay increase of 5% in order to ensure that rates of pay are competitive. This issue will be addressed at the next governing board meeting. The annual financial report generated by Claremont Accountants Advisors for the year ending June 30, 2019, was disseminated to the board and will be discussed at the next meeting. The second iteration of the design plan with the organizational chart was presented. The governing board approved the filing of the fiscal report, subject to audit, the human resources report, and the early head start updates. Under the curriculum and instruction report, Mr. Rice indicated that there will be a meeting this evening, which was in January of, 9th of 2020, to address concerns that parents might have regarding recent newspaper articles about the Edison Magnet School and the contract with ACES that is set to expire in June 2020. Mr. Rice indicated that the holiday fair at WIMS was successful, and an application for a critical language grant has been submitted in an effort to acquire a teacher to teach Mandarin. Under new business, the governing board approved the organizational chart to reflect the second iteration of the design plan. The governing board entered into an executive session for negotiations for purpose, for the purpose of real estate and personnel matters. The sale of the tech services building in North Haven was approved. There are 65 Wallingford students attending ACES programs, and this was just sent to us from Thomas Danahue, who was the executive director, indicating that Thomas Edison Middle Magnet School was named a National Magnet School of Distinction by Magnet Schools of So, that's the ACES governing board report for this month. On to the business think tank, Mrs. Castelli. Did we have a meeting? Shoot. You have anything to say, Dr. Menzo? Were you there?
Unfortunately, I was not at that meeting.
Oh, man.
I was, I apologize. I know what the agenda was, though. They did go over an update on the career pathways at the high school. They also went over an update on getting, acquiring information from the businesses about potential career opportunities that are available to our students, because we're continuing to do that crosswalk so we can look at and form instructional opportunities for our students in the high school and middle school level.
So, I have to tell you, I actually did create a report for that the day after I went to the meeting, and then I totally forgot, because I usually let you speak about it. So, I apologize. I'll send, I'll send my notes out to the, to the board at least, though.
They followed the agenda that was...
Because I was a little bit more detailed than the report you just gave, since you weren't even there.
Well, I got an update.
I wanted to make you proud, and here I blew it. I'm so sorry.
It's okay. I missed the next one just for you.
Oh, we'll appreciate your notes, Mrs. Castelli.
All right.
PTAC update?
So, we had a PTAC meeting last Tuesday. There was a presentation by four of the curriculum coordinators, the two humanities coordinators, our science technology coordinator, and our mathematics coordinator regarding district assessment data. It was the only agenda item that was reviewed as the attendance of the meeting was small. But the presentation will be online with the minutes of the meeting for any of our viewing audience if they're interested.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't know if Ms. Turner wanted to give a PPS, PTAC update, or...
Sure. We met last week, week before, last week. We had a presentation from CPAC. They came and presented Understanding Challenging Behaviors in Children. The presentation was well-attended. I believe we had about 17 parents, and we had some staff members there as well. She really supported us in... She really supported us in different strategies and techniques that parents can use at home and how they can communicate with school about those behaviors, because they're difficult for everybody. We also spent a lot of time talking about our Special Education Resource Fair, which is scheduled for April 22nd at Zandries, and that will be from 6:00 to 8:00. So we will start sending out invitations to representatives to come share. And we talked a little bit about our strategic plan in the Special Education Department, some of the progress we're making with professional development, and some program revisions in the schools to really support middle school and high schoolers in becoming more independent and academically focused.
Thank you so much. Plan of Conservation and Development, Mr. Reynolds.
Well, excuse me. We will be having our first meeting of 2020 on February 24th.
Okay, we'll look forward to that.
Yes, I do. I look forward to reporting. Any news of the POCD?
Food Services Strategic Plan Committee, Mrs. Purcell.
I have not been to a meeting yet, but I went and talked to them to make sure I get on the email list.
Okay, the Food Service Strategic Planning meeting was held last Thursday, January 23rd. First topic of discussion concerned breakfast expansion to other schools besides the two high schools. A general discussion was held on possible expansion of the school breakfast program on the following topics. The need for any possible expansion to pay for itself. Potential student issues to overcome, such as bus schedules, drop-off points, supervision. Potential breakfast offerings, whether or not we wanted to do a grab-and-go, and we listed breakfast components. Potential service issues, such as labor, storage, and delivery schedules. Other issues, such as school administration concerns, union labor issues, breakfast cleanup, state applications, computer setups. And we also discussed the benefits of breakfast expansion, including happy, healthy students, higher levels of focus and concentration, lower levels of poor behavior, additional food service revenues, and additional reviews in state grants. Afterwards, we discussed the Wallingford Junior Chef Healthy Cooking Competition, in which the food services will be a partner. We discussed the Wallingford Health Festival, that'll take place at Sheehan High School on March 12th, in which the Junior Chef Cooking Contest will take place that evening. Fifth-grade students will be participating by submitting healthy recipes. The recipes from each school will be chosen, and the students will produce the selected recipes. Each student will be paired up with a high school student to produce a recipe in the Sheehan High School kitchen. There'll be a panel of judges that will sample each finished product and pick the overall winner, and the winner will have their recipe featured on the lunch menu on the following month. And we actually met today to map out the whole timetable, responsibilities, and events. So it was a great meeting.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Mr. Deptula, the Four-School Window Replacement Project.
We're just working on closing out the projects. We have one open item out of all four, and I expect that to be wrapped up, and we should be able to close out those projects within, I would say, a couple months.
Okay, thank you. I don't believe there's any old business to come before the board. We're on item 12, Instructional Committee, Mrs. Corso and Mrs. Purcell.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm going to move item 12. Testing. There it goes. I'm going to move item 12 point. Testing. Okay, we'll try this one. I'm going to move item 12.11 up to the top, if that's okay with everybody.
Yeah, it's fine.
In order to do so, I'm going to make a motion that the Board of Education approve the use during the 1920 school year of a sick leave donation as requested by the WEA. The employee will receive his teacher per DM rate minus the 90-day long-term sub-rate of $125 per day for 30 days.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Motion carries. Thank you. I really want this one to work, though. No, that's okay. Okay, so we'll go back to the top, and I think I'm going to turn the rest of this piece of the Instructional Committee over to Mrs. Latour. Is that right? Starting with our policies, nondiscrimination.
So all of the nondiscrimination, this is the second read, as we talked about at the Instructional Committee meeting at the beginning of the month, these were all updated due to statutory changes. The policies themselves all are using the same language, which we felt was also very important, from the board level to personnel to students. And then the proposed deletion were the old ones, because they were under the wrong number. So that kind of explains all of the nondiscrimination policies. Any requested changes?
Thank you, Mrs. Latour.
So then the other two policies that are on there are the official second reads of the Electronic Device Regulation and the Graduation Requirement Policy. The Graduation Requirement Policy was discussed at the Instructional Meeting again at the beginning of the month, where it just details the changes to the state statute. The board discussed the requirements at length throughout the past year, and so this policy update memorializes those changes.
Questions or comments? Thank you again, Mrs. Latour.
And then the regulation for the Electronic Device Policy also was discussed at this month's Instructional Committee meeting. It details just some minor changes in language that was requested, and so this is the second read. The eighth version of the second read. Sorry. Sorry. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Operations Committee, Mrs. Allison and Mrs. Castelli.
Okay, well, that'll be me, because Allison wasn't able to attend the meeting. So at our January 13th Operations Committee meeting, the financial report from Mr. Baron was presented and approved. At present, there is a $575,189 surplus, which includes the contingency funds, which are there to cover unanticipated needs, and the excess cost estimate the state should provide, and is always subject to change. Presently, these items are in the positive, as is our transportation fund, which is unusual. We are showing deficits in the tuition funding, which is typically in the red until we get reimbursed from the state later in the year. And then that's, can be volatile as well. We don't know how much, we're not guaranteed until we get the money, how much we're getting. Deficits also are seen in the benefits and salaries categories, which is unusual, but it has been the case this entire year, because enrollment projections for this year, when we were doing the budget for this year, were in a decline. And the good news is, so we cut, we actually reduced teachers and their appropriate salaries to go along with that, obviously. And then when the new year rolled around, new school year rolled around, the enrollment had actually increased. So we had to hire back teachers, which means we didn't fund enough in those line items, and they're now showing a deficit. But typically, those at the end of the year are usually in the positive, so I don't see that as being anything anybody has to worry about. Plus, we have our contingency if we had to use it. The cafeteria part, which we presented, was presented by Mr. Bondi and approved as presented. We are currently showing a loss of $77,269, which is a slight improvement over the loss shown for this period of time last year. Our district has a 31.1% of the student population eligible for free or reduced lunch. I think that's an important thing for the public to be aware of. Of that population, that 31%, 41.8% actually participate. Mr. Bondi is working diligently to increase the partition rate, as we know, kids perform much better when their stomachs are full. For those who may not be aware, we are reimbursed for free and reduced expenditures with federal and state dollars. Worth noting is that Food Services is operating this year, as they did last year, with no funding from the Board of Ed. There are food services funds remaining in ACES money market savings account that should offset any potential deficit at the end of the year. We then answered some questions, there were answers to questions from the January Instructional Meeting regarding a modification request to the AP European History Course. Those answers were supplied, and the modification request was approved, which resulted in that course now being split into two half-year courses. We received an update regarding, listing, excuse me, we have received an updated listing from Mr. Deptula of all the maintenance and facilities projects he's got on his plate, and also a request from Mr. Deptula to move $88,000 from within the facility's budget to another line item within the facility's budget to allow for the removal of an oil tank at Sheehan. While this work was originally slated for next year's budget, a state inspection revealed that this tank needed to be removed this year. A suggestion to investigate bonding the funds for this removal was made, and Mr. Deptula stated he will follow up. In the meantime, the board did approve moving the funds to avoid any delays in completing this work, should bonding not be feasible, given the timeframe. That's it.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Castelli, for a very thorough report. Questions? No? There is no new business, I don't believe, so we're on to the administrative report. Dr. Menzel.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to start by recognizing a few additional donations. We'd like to thank the Wallingford Elks Lodge for a donation of $400 to E.C. Stevens Elementary School. Also, we'd like to thank Mr. George Messier for the donation of a solar panel valued at $50 to the district that's being used by the Science Curriculum Department. Also, to the VFW 9965 for a $150 donation of school supplies to Highland Elementary School. To Mr. Derek Jet, who donated $500 for use by Highland Elementary School for science, technology, and engineering and math activities. So those are some additional donations. The donations the board approves each month are above $500, and these are the ones that are just below that threshold, but we believe that they deserve recognition, because everything adds up in our district, and we truly appreciate the services. The Elks, just to go back to the Elks Lodge, that was for 11 turkey dinners and fixings for 11 families at Stevens Elementary School. So we just wanted to say thank you again. I do want to address the bus issue, because everything is being written about it, as well as cartoons. The fact is that last week, Mr. Baron, myself, and our transportation clerk, Marion Croce, met with Durham Bus Company. We had a very frank conversation with them about our expectations. We set a strict deadline of this week to have the situation remedied. We gave them recommendations. We had done some research. We provided them with what we felt would be a good remedy to the situation. We're waiting to hear back from them. As soon as we do, the board will be communicated with directly, as well as families, and of course, the newspapers, so they can get the whole story. So we will be doing that. But again, we did not take this lightly. We did not push this under the rug. The real issue really became evident as a challenge right before the holiday, and upon receiving that data, we activated conversations. We sought out the bus company to have these conversations, and we continue to do so. So we do take it very seriously. It is at a point, and I don't remember my exact quote, if it gets reported correctly in the newspaper tomorrow, but it's pretty direct to the bus company that we are no longer able to tolerate this, nor should our families and our students. But again, unlike what might have been popular opinion that we pull the trigger on a contract and say, nope, you're not going to have a contract anymore, we do have to make sure students get to school every day. And when you have over 40 or close to 50 buses and vans every day, it's not easy to just dispose or to sever a contract with a company, expecting another company is going to have all those buses and transportation opportunities to happen just suddenly the next day. So these do take time, so we appreciate everyone's genuine concern about this issue. We appreciate feedback, and we certainly are moving forward in an expeditious manner, and we will communicate. We do take it seriously. Again, I also do want to state that I know in talking with our Transportation Department, again, we always are worried about student safety. So we are making sure that while it has been reported, the buses have been crowded. Again, from the reports that we have that we can go on, the buses were not above capacity. They were within the standard, and again, that'll be always our goal. But our main goal is to get the services that we contracted for and that our students and families deserve. So we will keep you posted on that, hopefully, prior to the end of the week, but soon, if not then, soon thereafter. So that was an update there. On some different notes, the mayor will have a State of the Town address on this Thursday at Masonic at noon. It's always a great event to hear the mayor speak about the many town agencies and also kind of give us a little glimpse into his thinking of the budget process this year. So I know I'll be there. I believe Ms. Levak will be there, and we will be representing the school district. This Thursday evening, I'll be the emcee for, oh, gosh, 10 years now, I think, for the Adult Spelling Bee, the Wallingford Education Foundation Adult Spelling Bee. It's my opportunity to test out some of my new jokes from my stand-up comedy that I do north of the border. Just kidding. That was a joke. Kind of, sort of. But the reality is that it's a great event, where it's a great opportunity for the adults in our community to help raise funds for the Wallingford Education Foundation, which gives back to our district in so many ways, the mini-grants for our teachers, the professional development grant for our teachers. So again, if you're, you don't have to spell, you don't have to be part of a team. Come along. You could take part in the Audience Spelling Bee. There's some raffles, there's sometimes an auction that I'm asked to do, and it is a really wonderful evening, and I want to thank all of our staff for their hard work and their willingness to participate. Just a couple of other things. Last Friday, excuse me, was it last Friday? Thursday, last Thursday, we hosted with Economic Development Commission. Mr. Ryan was hosting Brazilian business people who were here to learn more about Wallingford and decide whether or not they might want to move their businesses to Wallingford, Connecticut. And we were asked, because we have such a great relationship with EDC, to host them at the Center for Innovation and Design and share with them a little bit about the district, and also provide them a nice lunch, that was paid for by the town, that was provided by Cook's Table from Lyman Hall. And I have to say, the people that were here, the business leaders, were extremely impressed by all the programming that our school district offers. They had visited other districts in the state of Connecticut or other towns. I don't know if they visited the schools. I think that might have been a little bit unique to us. But I assured them that we have two state championship, recent state champions in our Lyman Hall hockey team, as well as our Sheehan football team. We have amazing teachers, semifinalists for the past several years, if not state teacher of the year. We have incredible staff across our districts, low class sizes, amazing programming, amazing staff throughout the district, and most importantly, amazing students and families. So it was a great event. To be able to highlight that, Mr. Ryan stopped by the office today to thank the support of the district in that endeavor. And that's what we're trying to do. We have to be partners with the community, because we all know that business helps support tax base, which helps create an opportunity for local taxpayers, homeowners, to pay less potentially, but also to provide us the services and funds we need to run our district on a yearly basis. Coming up, starting next Wednesday, we start our third manufacturing pipeline program. It's a six-week program. It's Wednesdays for six weeks at Hubcap. We already have, I think, over a dozen people signed up, so we're moving forward. That's a program in collaboration with Workforce Alliance, as well as a few businesses in town. Our college and career specialists work those evenings to help the participants with their resume writing, as well as interview skills. We also have our Adult Education Program, who helps assist with students who need to brush up potentially in the area of mathematics. And then ultimately, at the end of the program, at the end of six weeks, all the candidates are interviewed for potential positions at local businesses in advanced manufacturing. We are at the over 80% threshold of work placement, which is higher than most statewide programs. statewide programs. And again, this program costs the participants thirty-five dollars. They receive dinner each night, but it's really funded by the local businesses in town participating. So we do thank Alnext, we thank BIC, we thank Oberkirk Steel, and Hobson and Motzler. They're phenomenally supportive, and we also did receive a donation from Workforce Alliance to support us in this initiative this year. We also have the medical careers pipeline, which we're in collaboration with Gaylord Hospital and Masonic for our adult education program. So that program is working with our adult education CNA candidates to actually have them direct connectly with those two medical facilities in town so that they could actually be hired by the end of the program. So that's very exciting. We did host last week a medical assembly of a variety of medical professionals throughout Connecticut in Wallingford to talk about our, the future of our programming for our students in our medical careers. So we had Hartford Hospital, we had Masonic, we had actually the EMT, the fire department was there, we had Midstate, we had a variety of different groups from radiology to nursing to talk about what are the gaps, what are the employment opportunities for our students, and what could we potentially, over time, based on student interest, based on areas of need in the state, what programming might be available to us to develop. So we've created three subcommittees that I'll be starting to meet with next month to really look at curricular development, not for obviously this fall, but potentially for two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two, as we move forward. But they were extremely impressed by the fact that our, our programs keep growing and that our students are exceptional candidates. And we're looking at for, you know, the student who goes into CNA and decides, you know, that's not for me, but I might want to do high-level research at a hospital. I don't want to be patient-facing, I'd rather be, you know, data-facing, so to speak. So we were talking to different, the hospitals about, is there a need for that? And they said, absolutely. So we're looking at some programming there, as well as some things as radiology, scrub tech, phlebotomy, those areas. So again, great opportunity, and we had such an amazing turnout. We had over, I would say, fifteen, twenty people there at nine o'clock in the morning from hospitals. It's, it's pretty, it's pretty good to get people there. We also are working with Cho, our high school students in our business program, are working with students from Cho on a project that we're working through Hubcap, where we're trying to have our, our students who are interested in how to start a business work with small businesses in town that are, been in business for less than three years. So we, we've developed a survey that the students will go out and give to these local businesses to find out what are their pain points. You know, what are they still struggling with that? Because we find that if a business gets past that third year, I don't know this from experience, but I know from the people I've talked to, that they, they are able to be more stable, and their, their longevity is increased exponentially. So we're trying to reach out to those businesses and say, okay, do you need help with marketing? Is that a sticking point for you? Is it your business plan in general? Do you, are you concerned about that? Is it financing? And then working with SCORE and other professionals in the community, offer workshops for those business owners in downtown Wallingford. But at the same time, have our high school students be able to be part of those workshops so they can learn also. So we're trying to embed this within the curriculum for Cho, as well as our high school students at both high schools in the business program. So we have a meeting on February tenth. I'll be there, I'll be at that meeting and then rushing to operations just to kick them off so that they can go out. We're gonna put them in teams of like four, because we figure they get a little nervous if they have to talk to somebody for the first time. But we're gonna do some, basically some dry runs with them and just have them be able to practice their, their script, so to speak. And then they'll have, the survey is a Google Doc, so a person could take it on their cell phone. Very short and simple, but we'll be able to collect that data, bring the students back, let them analyze the data, and then set up the meeting. So really empower them to be empowered for their learning, since they're interested in that area. So it's exciting. Roxanne McKay is part of the group that's working on this, as well as others from Hubcap. And last but not least, we do have one of, DAG Hammershold is having its musical, not this weekend, thank goodness, because it's the, well, I could say Super Bowl, they're not gonna sue me, but on TV you're not allowed to, you have to say the big game. But there's a Super Bowl Sunday next weekend, the weekend of the eighth, DAG is having its musical, which is susical. And then I believe Moran is in March, as well as Sheehan, and then Lyman Hall, as we heard tonight, is just starting auditions for their production of Chicago come May. So that's all I have.
Mr. Ross, did you have a question?
Yeah, just for the benefit of the TV land, the spelling bee, where is it gonna be and what time?
Okay, it's, I, I get directed, so I think it's at Moran Middle School, and I want to say it's at six PM.
Thank you.
But they can check our district website to clarify and find out if I was wrong. I, I, sometimes I don't know where I'm supposed to be until five minutes before, but I will be there because I've otherwise, I am correct. Six PM, Moran Middle School.
There you go. Website says seven.
Oh, seven o'clock. But you should get there at six because you could buy your raffle tickets, and you want to really do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Menzo. All right, we're up to announcements. All the following meetings will take place at the Board of Education Conference Room, one hundred South Turnpike Road. Wednesday, January twenty-ninth, twenty twenty, Special Operations Committee meeting at six PM. Monday, February third, twenty twenty, Instructional Committee, six thirty PM. Wednesday, February fifth, twenty twenty, a Special Operations Committee meeting, if needed, at six PM. Monday, February tenth, twenty twenty, Operations Committee, six thirty PM. And Wednesday, February twelfth, twenty twenty, a Special Operations Committee meeting, if needed, at six PM. The date of our next regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting will be on Monday, February twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen, in the Board of Education Conference Room, one hundred South Turnpike Road, at six thirty. If there is no further business of an official nature to come before this board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Discussion. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you very much.